Could you please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor's Minute and Council Comments. And first off, I'd like to take a moment and remind everyone today is National Voter Registration Day. If you haven't, I would encourage you to register to vote. If you are registered, you might want to just double-check your registration in case you've moved, make sure everything is up to date. And then, most importantly, I would like to encourage you to vote in this coming election in November. There are a lot of issues crucial to our nation and to our city, and you can do that either via voting in person here at City Hall through the drive-through window, or you can do that by mail through an absentee ballot, or you can wait till November 3rd and vote on Election Day if that's your choice. But we'd encourage everyone to register to vote and to come out and vote. Also want to take a second and mention that the City of Bristol has a grant funding for small businesses, and the information is on our website, and the deadline for that is coming up. So if you are a small business, please look at that, look at the eligibility. We want to try to help the businesses in our community with those funds. And then, I believe Councilman Mumpower, who's not here, is either online or trying to get online.
I think he's trying at the moment.
Okay.
We're having some issues with the phone.
Well, just when he connects, make sure that the minutes reflect that he's online, I guess. So that's all I have. Does anybody else have any comments? All right. Item B, City Manager's Comments.
No comments tonight.
Okay. Item number C, Matters to be Presented by the Public Non-Agenda Items. First up, Ms. Beth Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. This item is on the agenda, but it's not a public comment item, so I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts if that's all right. I'm Beth Reinhardt with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce, but more importantly, I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer, I live at 1,000 Chester Street, Bristol, Virginia. Just wanted to talk for just a minute about the funding discussion that we're going to have about Discover Bristol tonight. I just can't say how much, and I know you already know this, but I have to say it, I just strongly urge you all's very thoughtful consideration of the funding decisions that's going to be made, we hope, with a percentage or other mechanism that makes sense. And I appreciate all you all's comments the last couple of times we've talked about this. And Councilman Wingard, I have not had a chance to talk to you, but I appreciated your comments as well, and I know that you all value the work that we do, so thank you for that first and foremost. The funding's really about prioritizing and supporting the tourism businesses in the city, more than it is about funding us. You know, there's always this conversation about outside agencies, and although I get that, I know that technically that's what we are, but it's almost like it's a dirty word, that the outside agencies get whatever's left over, the outside agencies, you know, have to jump through every hoop to get funded, but we're really, should be considered more like a department within the city because we provide a tourism marketing effort that's really required by the city, but when you impose a lodging tax at the local level, so I just say that for what it's worth. We do encourage to be funded at a set percentage or some other mechanism that we can come up with that I think that you all feel makes sense in conversation. And I know that we've started talking about other organizations as well, and we fully support the funding of those, but we have been advocating with you all for over two years on trying to come to some agreement. It's been the work and the efforts of our staff, day in and day out with you all, and we want them to get funded too, but we feel like the Discover Bristol stream of funding has to be its own separate entity, and figure out what that is, and then have a discussion about those others as well. Our funding is most directly correlated and attributed to the lodging taxes that are collected. That's how you know if your tourism marketing is working, the marketing, to you all's point, that's outside the area. That's our greatest incentive, is if we're given a percentage to do better so that we get more funding to do more tourism promotion. Some have said that we're not delivering, even though our, that we are delivering even though our funds have been cut, but that's really because we have built a very strong brand over many years. And to be honest, it's because Bristol's Tennessee has been picking up the slack, I mean, when we weren't able to here. I mean, so it's not because that when you defund, things just keep being okay, which was an implication that we were not doing our job. I'd also ask you to put yourself in our shoes. If we were a city department and you all gave a city employee, so we're going to give this department $50,000, you got to hire an employee, you got to pay their benefits, you got to pay for computer and supplies and office space, and on top of that, you actually expect them to market the city? What do you think you're going to get for that? And I mean that very honestly and frankly. I mean, it's only fair, we're being held to all these accountabilities, and you want greater return and greater expectations for $50,000 when you wouldn't do that to your own city employee. So I just ask that you be very considerate of that, and just appreciate that we're where we are. It's been a lot of hard work, so thank you all for getting us to where we are tonight to have the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Next on the list would be Nancy Marney. Ms. Marney?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. There is no casino. A casino does not exist. But what does exist is a mammoth city debt of $107 million. That does exist as I speak. And the number one priority of this city has to be pay that debt down. Until the debt is paid down, we are restricted in what we can do. This is a very uncertain time. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know whether the virus is going to boomerang, we don't know whether it's going to knock heads with the flu, we don't know whether people are going to lose more jobs or get more jobs. We don't know. But what we do know is that morally and legally, we have to make the bond payments on that debt. Now, with this in mind, and I won't go into this to the depth I would like to, but I will at least hit the surface, not much more. I would think that with this in mind, that wisdom, knowledge, and understanding would dictate that at this particular time, in this context, that this city should not make any financial commitments, none. Now, I am very supportive of the various organizations within our city. However, I also am very supportive of the people who live in this city, and the people whose back is having to carry the load, whose back is carrying the load. Now, I would suggest that some of the organizations right now who are interested in being given more funds should do what we had to do four or five years ago, and what we're having to do now, what the city's having to do, what the citizens are having to do, cut back. Use brain power when you don't have money. Now, there are organizations and groups within our city who have wonderful contacts. They already have the resource of contacts and knowing people and knowing how to do things, but there is no casino. A casino does not exist, but a massive city debt does exist. I suggest very sincerely that you let wisdom, knowledge, and understanding guide your decisions at this time, and not commit to any more financial help. And if by some reason things change, that happens, we know that it does happen, then if you wanted to give a grant to these organizations, give a grant, a one-time grant, that would be one thing you could do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marney. Next on the list of people that signed up, Karen Hester. I think she's here. Okay. I was going to say, I thought of someone. Hello? Take your time.
Thank you, Mayor Hartley, and Councilman, Mayor, I mean, City Councilman, folks. My name is Karen Hester, and as you know, I'm a small business owner downtown. Suffered COVID, we've all seen the aftermath of that, and, you know, I'm a property owner here and fully vested in Bristol. I grew up in Marion, Virginia, and started working at King Pharmaceutical years ago and fell in love with the area and totally invested 100% here. I mean, all my cards are on the table, I mean, I'm all in. So in addition to having Cranberry Lane downtown, and I have some Airbnb and Verbo rentals that we have, bringing folks to our area, doing my part to, when we get them here, to spend their money here, you know, to come and enjoy our beautiful outdoors, and if they love it so much, it's my hope that they come and love the area and fall in love and want to move here and live here. We have so much to offer in our area. But I can tell you that our city is tourism-driven. You know, my businesses rely on folks traveling to come and explore Bristol, to come and hike the trails and do the biking trails and beautiful fly fishing and things that we have here. So we continually need that outlet of marketing our city to get folks here. And when we get them here, we capture their dollars here. We get their lodging dollars, they stop and buy gas, they go to the grocery stores, they eat at our restaurants. So those are the kinds of things, and when you're looking at your budgeting, that I hope you carefully consider those things. I've been in business 21 years here with Cranberry Lane, six years with the Ice Cream and Candy Side, and we have a strong customer base of folks that are here locally, but I can tell you that to keep my doors open, I must have travelers here. And not only for me, you know, I employ several people, I think I have 15 people at the Ice Cream and Candy Side, three or four at Cranberry Lane, and then more to help keep the real estate running. But for me, to hire those employees and keep them on the payroll, I count on those tourism dollars. We had a wonderful race weekend, folks shopping, it was exciting to see the streets full and people back out spending their money. We had a great Labor Day. I can't imagine the time when we would have Bristol not marketed and people out there waving that Bristol flag to try to get people to come and experience what we know and love here. So it's so critically important that we look at those, and I know it's tough times. Believe me, I evaluate my business all the time to say, am I going to be able to stay open? COVID hurt folks. COVID hurt, being closed for two months hurt, but thankfully, you know, we had reserves, we're going to be in business, we're going to stay in business, I'm going to push it through, through the long haul. And I know that you guys have tough decisions in front of you, but we're asking for careful consideration because I want to be in business here for the next 20 or 30 years and be able to, you know, proudly welcome people when they come to visit. And what I call, as we call it, rolling out the Southern hospitality and the red carpet. So unfortunately, thanks for the time today, thanks for allowing me to speak. I'm going to have to cut out of the meeting a little bit early, I've got a couple more hours left to sell some fudge and ice cream, so, but thanks again, and if I can do anything or help in any way, I'm always right downtown. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Hester. Next on the list, Erin Lilly.
I'll echo Ms. Hester's comments. We've built over 150 homes in the Bristol, Virginia area since 2000, and Mr. McLaughlin says they're going to hire 2,000 employees. I think there's a real need for housing in Bristol, Virginia right now, a real shortage. But I want to share with you guys, let's see if I can do this in a minute, 30 seconds. Back in the spring, we had our equipment up on the slopes of Wildfly Ridge, and we were trying to get everything, everything that the city wanted, let's put it that way. And I would rather not do this in public, but I don't, I don't have any choice. My help, the greatest help I've had from the city manager, and he's not sure if what we can do about this, is the reason I'm here tonight. We had our bulldozers, compactors, all of our equipment up there back in the spring. The hillsides needed to be pushed down in the bottom, and I think you all, we've discussed that before. We were pushing all the dirt down in there, and one of the city employees came up and sent our bulldozers and compacters and truck drivers and everyone home without contacting me, contacting the excavation company. It was a disaster. The contractor, who's not as patient as I am, he got mad, didn't call me, just loaded up all his equipment and took off to another job in Johnson City. Since that time, I'm like Karen Hester, we've had a real problem with COVID. Our main, main man, his wife came, she was number one on the list of COVID positive in town, and because of that, her whole family, two of her family worked for us. They all had to be quarantined, and it was only after she tested negative did the rest of them go into their 14 days quarantine. So I lost, we really lost, but the sending the stuff home without telling us, now we're having trouble getting them back, they can't come back until they finish three or four other jobs. As you can see, what I just handed you there, there's a legal, something legal is going to happen at the end of the month, and my guys have been off from COVID. I have had a COVID-related, something's had me off for three months. I just came back to work September the 1st, and now we're faced with all of this. The slopes have been seeded, and I'm hoping this time next week, if you drive by up there, you'll see all the greenery. But I don't know if we need a council ombudsman, or something needs to be done that's not in the legal realm, if I can avoid it. So I would ask that the council look at this document and see if you can come up with something halfway that we can get around this. Fair enough? About two minutes is up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lilly, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Okay, that was everybody that had signed up. I don't know if there's anyone that came in late or would otherwise like to speak, but you're more than welcome if you'd like to. All right. Hearing none, we'll move to Item D, Adoption of the Agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, hold on.
Is Mr. Mumpower on? No.
He's not? Okay.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. Item number one, Public Hearing on an Offer Received for City-Owned Property Lots E1 to E3 at Clear Creek Spyglass Court. At this time, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing for this open, and we will have the staff report.
Counsel, we have received an offer on lots E1, E2, and E3 at Clear Creek. The total offer for all three lots is $25,000. Lots E1 and E2 are assessed at $45,000 each, and Lot E3 is assessed at $50,000. Each lot was listed with a realtor for $19,000 each. I'd previously sent you all some pictures of those lots, and at this time, this is only for a public hearing, and we'll just listen for any comments that individuals may have.
Okay. No one had signed up for the public hearing, but if anyone has comment, Mr. Pollard?
Thank you for making this available to the public, even those who hadn't signed up in advance. While on the, I guess I want to bring up my normal idea of, oh, and for the record, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. I want to bring up my normal idea that there's multiple sides to everything. On this, on the one hand, they are offering well below the asking price for these three lots. They've been listed for 19,000, they're asking, they're offering 25 for all three lots. On the other hand, these lots have been listed since at least the beginning of, if I remember right, 2018. I might be incorrect on that, but in any case, they have been listed for some time. Nobody else has made any offers, and getting something out of those lots, plus making them tax beneficial is a major thing to consider. Maybe it's not as much as we'd like to get out of them, but at least that way, they'll start being, they'll start generating tax revenue. And on one of these, the specific topic of this portion of the public hearing, this person is probably going to build, and probably going to build something nice on there. That means we have the potential of getting some significant tax revenue off of those properties, probably more than the loss in the initial cost. So I just wanted to bring up that to y'all's attention, I imagine it's probably already to your attention, and I like the idea of being able to sell something that's not being productive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, hearing no further comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on these lots, E1, E3 at Clear Creek Spyglass Court. We'll move to Item number two on the agenda, Public Hearing on an Offer Received for City-owned Property, Lot 12 at Clear Creek Augusta Court. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this and have the staff report.
Counsel, Item Two is a public hearing for an offer received on Lot 12, which is Augusta Court in Clear Creek. We received a $6,500 offer on this lot. It was previously listed for $19,000, and it is assessed at $45,000 as well. I forgot to mention in Item One, but both these items were advertised on September 10th for the public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Again, no one has signed up for this, I don't know if anyone wants to comment on this in particular. All right. Hearing none, no comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move to Item number three, the Proclamation Recognizing Child Passenger Safety Week and Buckle Up for Life Day.
Counsel, this is a proclamation recognizing child passenger safety week and buckle up for life. Child passenger safety technicians and instructors put their knowledge to work by conducting child safety checks where parents and caregivers receive hands-on assistance with the proper use of child restraint systems and safety belts. The City of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee wish to encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, including the proper installation and use of car seats. Child safety while traveling can be accomplished with a car seat inspection, ensuring that children are riding in the correct seat for their age and size. The cities encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time.
Again, no one had signed up to speak about this, but if anyone has any comments, I know that somebody had, I guess, emailed the clerk, and she has comments to read.
I have a comment from Samuel Jones of Bristol's Promise. He said, "Thank you for recognizing Child Passenger Safety Week. As you know, child passenger safety is still important even during the time of COVID-19. We could not do the work we do in this community without the help of people like Melanie Fleener at the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department. Also, I want to thank Todd Peak at Lighthouse Supply Company for allowing us to store car seats. Again, thank you for recognizing Child Passenger Safety Week."
Do you want me to read it or read?
I'll go ahead and read it. Proclamation Recognizing Child Passenger Safety Week and Buckle Up for Life Day. Whereas children are our future and it is responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the U.S. only one in four child car seats are properly installed, and whereas research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of fatal injury by 71% among infants, 54% among toddlers, and 45% among children ages four to eight, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children age 13 and under always ride in the backseat, buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, and whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia are committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as Bristol's Promise and Buckle Up for Life to help make the kind of choices that will keep children alive and safe, and whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Now therefore, we, Malin Luttrell and Bill Hartley, the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 20th through 26th, 2020, as Child Passenger Safety Week, and the day of September 22nd, 2020, as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time." up themselves and their children every trip, every time." Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. The resolution is presented.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any comments, discussion from council? Hearing none, clerk, call her all.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. Item number four, discussion of funding for tourism agencies. This is kind of a recurring theme here. Uh, I think this is the third or fourth time we've had this discussion. It's been good and productive discussions, I think. Um, you know, in, uh, our previous discussions, we've talked about, uh, the need to, uh, take a percentage of funding and reinvest that back into, uh, the CBB and other agencies promoting, uh, tourism funding and also that that percentage of funding, uh, I think there's a general consensus should come from the, uh, lodging tax, that that would be, uh, the most appropriate place. So, uh, I think at the last meeting, we had asked for some additional, uh, financial information and, um, the city manager and the CFO had went and, and given us that to kind of get a sense of certain percentages. And, uh, I know Ms. Reinhardt had also sent some, uh, financial information as well. So, um, to, uh, wanna, I guess, Mr. City Manager, you wanna talk a little bit about the information you sent or, or?
Sure.
And Ms. Reinhardt, where we get into our discussion and we go from there and try to see where we can, uh, what we, how far we can move along this path?
I'm gonna pull up my spreadsheet here real quick. Um, as you all know, you all have discussed, um, funding CBB with general fund dollars for, since late July, early August and trying to come to some sort of consensus or an agreement is how we continue to fund CBB moving forward. At the last, uh, meeting, there was a discussion about funding CBB 10% of the lodging tax. Well, I'll take that back. Having a 10% allocation for outside agencies, which would include CBB, Birthplace of Country Music, and Believe in Bristol. And out of that 10%, each one of those three entities would get a certain percentage of the 10%. I previously provided each of you all a spreadsheet that was, um, drafted by Ms. Spradlin in regards to what those allocations would mean across the board if, um, if those, um, if y'all chose to go that route. And what we, uh, what Ms. Spradlin and I recommend is instead of looking at this as a fiscal year for lodging taxes, you look at it from a January to December, simply because, um, once we close December, we'll have the numbers for the entire year going into the budget season and it would not be an unknown for the number that we need to put into our budget. Plus, it would give each entity an idea of what their, um, what their, uh, allocated, um, funds would be. So if you start at 10% based on fiscal year 19, the, uh, 10% would be $129,461, would then be split between, uh, those three agencies, ever how this council sees fit. Uh, I know Mr. Wingard had mentioned go up 2%. So any, from, it would range anywhere from $129,461 at 10% all the way up to $258,923 at 20%. Um, I think at this point, I know Mr. Wingard and Mr. Hartley have had discussions as to how they, um, have considered moving forward. I don't know if either one's moved off their previous discussion, but, um, I think at this point, it's just up to you all to tell city management how you want to proceed and then we can draft a resolution and, uh, memorialize that at, at the next meeting or if we need to continue to discuss, we can do that as well.
Okay. All right.
Well, if it's okay, I'd kind of like to start by throwing out a question just to kind of see where everyone's at because I know we were talking about this funding regarding, um, several outside agencies, Discover Bristol, the museum, and Believe in Bristol. And basically, we're talking about using the lodging taxes for funding these agencies. And I wanted to see where everyone was at because we have talked about sometimes kind of grouping those big three together in a way, the more I think about it, and this may complicate things. It, it does make sense that Discover Bristol, the CBB, is, is funded by a percentage of lodging taxes because they're sort of the, the kind of blanket agency advertising, marketing all of Bristol. Um, and, and we can see return with, you know, hotel rooms being filled with more visitors here with, uh, lodging taxes. Part of me started to think that the other, um, agencies, the museum, Believe in Bristol, maybe not so much are driven trying to fill hotel rooms like Discover Bristol is. So I wanted to see where everyone was at regarding, do we continue to discuss it and lump those three together or should we discuss it more or less just, just talking about Discover Bristol, the CBB only as a lodging tax, um, a percentage to, to sort of make it easy? Then we get into budget season, we can figure out the museum and Believe in Bristol, but sort of separate them and focus more on just Discover Bristol, the CBB with lodging taxes. What does everyone think?
Well, my opinion of that is to keep them together because they've always been a topic of issue together forever. I mean, they're, they're the three agencies that have historically been supported in the city by the taxpayers. And I think, in my opinion, we need to keep it as simple as we can and not complicate it. The lodging taxes is money that is brought in from outside our boundaries of people traveling the country, coming to Bristol, going to wherever. So to keep it simple there and not get into Bristolians taxes that they are sending in, I would like to see it stay on the lodging side with all the money. That revenue is generated from outside this area, so let's keep it simple and use that money. And then the, putting the three together with that outside money, to me, is the most logical thing to do. Because if you start trying to separate them in individual entities, then at some point in time down the road, you take a higher risk at one of them coming back, hey, we need more money, blah, blah, blah. It's gonna happen. Everybody always wants more money. So if we keep it simple, keep them grouped together, keep the percentage constant, and that be an incentivized program to, for them to bring more tourism in, to market this city to the best of their ability, because the better they market it, the more people they can bring in, the more revenue they get the very next year. So to me, the incentivized program is the best avenue to take. And I believe we need to keep them together because all three of them benefits from the other. And the city benefits from all three. So why would we want to separate them? We can have that discussion, but sometimes we complicate things to the point to where it is just out of control. And the simpler we make this, the better off we're gonna be next year and 10 years from now and 20 years from now. If the city grows, they grow. If the city shrinks, they shrink.
So to kind of speak to, to speak to that question, I would, I'd agree with Mr. Wingard that I think it would be better if we kept our, our source of revenue for these, all three of these outside agencies specifically coming from the lodging tax. Because as, as he said, and I think as I said last meeting, this is paid for by people who don't live here. You know, 99.9% comes from people who live somewhere other than here. Um, so that's, that's money that's not our taxpayer money. And our taxpayer money is, is well-spent on the things we have like education and public safety and those are dollars that, you know, we commit, that we pay. As far as, um, how we would break it down, I, I think that it would be beneficial, not necessarily to have, you know, say we give 10% or 12% or however, whatever the percent is, to actually specify how much each of the, how much proportion of that actually goes to each agency. So, so you don't have effectively a knife fight between Birthplace of Country Music and Believe in Bristol. Now they, they know what the percentage is, even though they know it's coming out and it's a smaller percentage than what say B, uh, CBB would get, they know what their percentage is gonna be and they can, they can work with that. Um, as far as the performance aspect that I talked with the mayor about, uh, today, um, I think it is, I think it'd be very beneficial if, if we had some type of, um, performance incentives where we could, where we could see, you know, the money jump. You know, if, if we have a big influx of taxpayer or of a lodging tax come in from something, and maybe you could speak to that more, Mr. Mayor, but, um, I think that would be, I think that'd be a beneficial way to say, we guarantee you can get this percentage of the money, but if things go really well, maybe you can get a little bit more even somewhere. Because it, it's all, it's all performance-driven at that point.
Yeah. Um, I'll speak to that. First, I mean, um, I think the CBB makes perfect sense for lodging. That's, that's what their mission is, is to, uh, get people to come and visit our community and stay. You know, stay overnight. That, that's what they want to do is try to tell them all of the thi- not just to come here, but to tell them all the wonderful things and try to encourage them to stay overnight. So that is a, a, a good measure. Not so much with the birthplace or, uh, Believe in Bristol while they have events. A lot of those are some, especially more Believe in Bristol than the birthplace, but are more community-driven. And so the people coming to those are going back to their house. They're more about community and helping, um, the downtown events. And, and you need those events to drive people from out of town as well. Um, so, you know, ultimately, where does that source come from? I, I don't know. I could go either way on that. I mean, but as far as saying, here's a pot of money, now divide it up, um, to me, that is, it's not keeping it simple. Because if you sa- I mean, just say you were gonna give 10% and say 90% of it went or 80% of it went to the CBB, 10 to the birthplace, and 10 to Believe in Bristol, then I have to, why not just say 8%, 1%, and 1%? I mean, I'm having to do a, a whole separate calculation there and it, it's 10% and it was those numbers, it works pretty well, but sometimes, you know, you get a little off. So, um, I think, you know, figuring out what each one gets and I would say, let's deal with the CBB and try to solve that issue and we can come back, um, maybe at a, at another time and, and try to figure out the birthplace and, um, Believe in Bristol. And it may be to do something very similar. I think once we can get to the end of this process, we can see, and it may be, uh, very simple. I mean, one thing we've heard, uh, from, um, Ms. Reinhardt with, uh, Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Perrin with the CBB, but I, I haven't, I don't know what, uh, either of the other two agencies, what their thoughts might be if, if they have any ideas. Regarding the performance jump, uh, as I was thinking through this, I mean, one thing, we talked about a percentage and how, you know, that creates an incentive, that the more tax revenues that come in, the more then, um, would be, would go back to the others. But, um, trying to think through how you would do that in, you know, on a lower-end setting a, a floor and saying, you know, if you get, this is the floor and then, you know, when you get to this threshold, um, the percentage goes up. And then, you know, as the lodging tax goes up, I think might encourage, um, them to try to, you know, not just, um, move to, um, you know, increase tourism for the base percentage, but, but also to increase that percentage. And I know, you know, it was, um, mentioned at one of the meetings, kind of like a base plus commission. Well, this would be, I think, kind of similar to that. And say, you know, you started out at, I don't know, uh, just to, to not, just throw something out there, you started out at, um, you know, 1% or, or say 10% under, um, a million dollars. If you got in that million, maybe, I don't know, a million and a half, whatever range, you, the percentage jumped up a point or two. If you got over that million and a half range, which kind of seems to be, uh, the next threshold in terms of tax collections that we need to get at, then you get an even bigger percentage to try to incentivize, uh, them and give them a, a reason, not just the increase, but that they get even more money. Uh, because at that point, you know, you've got more people coming, you've demonstrated that, so you, you've shown that more people are coming so that you could reinvest more back into the product. Um, I don't know, it's just some thoughts I had on that, but...
My comments and, and on that right there and the questions I have is how are you going to track that additional incentive? The motel lodging, you know, CB is gonna take credit for that, of growing it. How are you gonna establish a guideline that'll show you that the Birthplace of Country Music brought in X numbers in the motel rooms or Discover Bristol?
Yeah.
There, there lies the problem there. You, you're, you're opening up an avenue that is gonna be hard to decipher and break down as to who is truly performing between these three. And how are you gonna additionally incentivize them with limited information that they're gonna be able to provide you because they can't prove that they're the ones that pack those motel rooms in any way? They can say, well, we had this, we had this, 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 and this, and this, and that's all that they're gonna have to go on. We really need to keep this simple because it's gonna be hard for the Birthplace of Country Music coming in here saying, you know, we're, we're packing these motel rooms, we, we want to be extra incentivized here. And if we do a percentage that is sustainable for them right now today, then they grow with the city. We got more motels being built. We've, you know, the dynamics of this city has the potential to change drastically, but like it was said tonight, it's not here yet. So we can't overextend. If the city grows, then everybody grows if we do our job right on this subject. And if we get it wrong, then we're just opening up another can of worms for other councils down the road to have to deal with again. So I'm, I'm requesting that we keep this as simple as possible. Set a rate that the vast majority of council can agree with. We're probably not gonna all agree on the rate, but we do need to keep it simple.
Two quick points, and I'm sorry if I'm about to make this complicated, but, uh, the first, I wanted to comment on, on what you said because I, I do agree that they, when I mentioned pulling out the CBB and only to, looking at them and not those other two agencies, because I do agree that they all three benefit from each other and the city benefits from all three. But in a way, I, I think that maybe the other two are more like a specific agency working on, focusing on one thing where the CBB is more of a blanket organization, kind of like a city marketing department in a way, working on, um, you know, marketing the whole city and not just on the Virginia side. So that's sort of what I was thinking about that because I, I guess it is kind of hard to, you know, tie in lodging tax increases or decreases with like Believe in Bristol when they're really more focused on, on downtown and maybe not really marketing so much to outside folks coming in. But, um, the second thing, uh, that I wanted to say to kind of make this even more complicated was that, again, the more I think about the incentives, I, I'm not really a fan of the incentives in a way because I think it is hard to track how, how well the CBB is performing in a way. Let me just, I guess, kind of explain the most... way, let me just, I guess, kind of explain, the most simple way I can think of it is, because I'm a real estate agent, so let's say, you know, say last year I sold 100 houses, and this year I'm going to sell 80. Doesn't really mean I wasn't working as hard, maybe there was a global pandemic, and I actually had to work harder, but I'm selling less, but I'm actually working harder than I was before. Or, or I'm selling 120 houses, I'm selling more houses, but maybe it was easier, because interest rates went down. So I guess it's kind of hard to, to say, okay, this is the lodging tax, it went down a little bit, so maybe they weren't as effective as they were the previous year. I do like the idea of maybe having some kind of a base, like a floor, because in a way, let's say there is a global pandemic and lodging taxes go to zero. I don't really think they need zero in funding. They, that may be a time when they actually need, need the funding to kind of, you know, get back, get back on the saddle there to, so I don't know, if I'm making things complicated. I know you said you want to make things easy, but...
Yeah, well, here my comments to that is, on a floor, is it right, let's say the tax, the lodging, let's say that this country shuts down. We've done seen that door open. Is it fair to the taxpayers to fund this if they did go to zero on lodging tax, because the country's not moving? Is it fair for us to ask our taxpaying base to write them a check out of the city treasures checkbook? I don't want to open that door. It all needs to be kept simple.
I mean, I, I agree with you as far as, you know, kind of going the other way. Let's say the lodging taxes were $10 million a year, and we were going to give them 10%. Do they really need a million dollars?
Guess what? I would love to write them that check. That means everybody just won.
But I do agree with you that there are other city services that, that need funding too at the same time, but it's complicated. There's no easy solution, I guess.
There's no reason to complicate it, gentlemen. Let's keep it simple.
So I know that, I guess, in discussions one-on-one, there'd been, there'd been a percentage kicked around of 12 and a half percent. And then, then there was the talk about the, the extra incentives. But if we're, if we're trying to keep it simple, and we just say, let's not, let's not worry about performance incentives, right? If we just throw that away. If we were to raise, I, I did some math over here. Say, say if we did just 12 as an, as an even number, that would have CBV at about 130 from this year. And if we just split, if that was 10%, and gave 1% and 1% to BCM and Believe in Bristol, they'd both be about 13,000, which is more than we gave them this previous year. Like BCM got 75, and Believe in Bristol got 1,700. And that would be if we did everything at 12%. If we went up to 14% and kept the 10% going to CBV, and then say we wanted to give BCM more money, because it's a larger organization, it does more stuff. So if we kept it at 10% for CBV, 3% to BCM would be almost $39,000, up from their 7,500. And 1% to Believe in Bristol would keep them at $13,000, which is significantly more than they got last fiscal year, too. And I think if we did that, that might be a good way to avoid having to do maybe these extra incentives. And it gives everybody a set percent, you know, you get the 10%, and you just break down. They have their number, and they know what they're going to get, and don't have any extra performance incentives.
Well, I agree with everything you just said, except for the percentages. I think it's too high, and I think, you know, Believe in Bristol, you know, they're, they're concentrated downtown, but they are the one entity there that we're talking about that does have events and stuff that is just for our residents, our locals. So we can take outside tax dollars generated from the rest of the country, give them more than 1% to where they can do a better job in providing services, entertainment, whatever they, whatever they do, you know, that brings our people together, our taxpayers downtown. Well, if they do that, guess what? Then the Bristolians are going into the shops downtown, spending money, and helping keep the doors open, and buying ice cream and fudge. So 1% to, to, to me, yeah, it's, it's more than we gave them last year, but if we done 12% and we split that up, and we done an 8%, a 2, and then another 2, or a 2 and 1/2, and 1 and 1/2, that's, that's more money than they have been allocated this past fiscal year, and we're at 12%. But I'd like to see, you know, Believe in Bristol get a little bit more, because they are the ones that's truly holding events to bring our taxpayers downtown. And Maggie has done a phenomenal job with that, and, and I think we've kind of not been as appreciative as we should have been in the past.
So, oh, I was just going to throw something out there, and you all may completely not like this. I, I definitely think this budget year we're in now was different than every other budget year we've had, just because of the coronavirus pandemic and the reductions we had to make to, to, well, across the board, really. I think we'll really get a good idea of where we're at in this current budget, and where we'll be when we're doing next year's budget, as we go through the end of the year this year, and then into the springtime next year. So, so I, I think it would be, you know, what I would love to see, in a perfect world, I'd love to see that 12% figure of the lodging tax to, to go to that, but, but only look at CBV by itself. And then when we get into the budget season, you know, we can figure out where we're at as far as what else we need, what other city services we need, and we look at the museum and the Believe in Bristol at that point.
You're talking about 12% straight to the chamber?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I can't go there. And, I mean, that, that's too much.
I think, or you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think that, in my mind, you know, maybe we can say 12 and 1/2, 13, 14, 12, you know, whatever. But I think one thing that we should, hopefully we could all agree on, I, I would hope, is maybe that just that 10% number would stick out, would be good for CBV. You know, that, that seemed, and I think maybe when I first came on council, that was something that you and I had talked about, or, or you had talked about with the city manager, Mr. Wingard, that maybe 10% would be a fair number for, for CBV, just by itself.
You misinterpreted that. My 10%, and I've been talking about this 10% for, what, two years now? That's between all three agencies. I have never implied that 10% to one agency, never. That 10% was always introduced and as a number to be split between the three.
But not, not even, you, you'd do it more as a proportional, CBV would get more than...
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, they are the marketing face of this community. Absolutely, they would get the, the biggest chunk of that pie.
Well, I'll just throw another wrench, try to complicate or uncomplicate things. You know, when we say 10% of the tax, are we talking, the, the information that we received from the city manager and the CFO show a net versus after incentives, other, you know, a few other agreements have been paid? Are we talking about a net or a gross? Because that, again, that's, that impacts the amount.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that we would look at the number after the incentives are taken out, you know, because we, we know that we have to pay those out, you know, the performance incentive, the performance agreements we have with different businesses. I'd hope that we would look at the number after those are taken out.
We see if you establish that number right now, let's say, let's just keep it simple, 10%. We've got $200,000 in incentives that we're paying out annually right now. So if we established a 10%, then when those incentives pay off, there's an additional $20,000 to go into the pot to be split among the outside agencies there. And they will pay off eventually. So I would like to keep it as a net, because one day, this council's going to change again. And if the next council coming in incentivizes more motels, or whatever the case may be, you can't open up the door where you set a rate, but then the end results of it is, you're giving away the farm. So it needs to be the net, in my opinion, because if, you can't get into double accounting, and, because the percentage is just going to go out the roof. But when that $200,000 is taken care of in these incentives, then that's another $20,000 annually to be divided among the three. And the one that's the largest recipient of that, that's, that's going to be a nice, a nice little tick up in their budget.
You know, I, I think, I mean, you want to, to me, if you want to make it simple, I, I would just go off the, the gross number. I think that, you know, the fact, because what, because we've made these, decided to take some of the lodging taxes to help business make capital investments in, in building new hotels, and again, that's investing back into tourism, where it, it would hold, you know, it'd have a more negative effect on the organizations trying to promote. You know, I think, you know, if they're promoting, then to me, the, the just, it would be simpler just to take that amount, and, and by doing so, you, you might come up, I think, I think the numbers we're talking about, the percentages might be a little lower as well. You know, but when you kind of add that up, depending what number you actually come up with, you're probably, you know, overall, between the incentives and the thing, somewhere between, in the 20% range of, of all the taxes that have been collected, that you're reinvesting back into tourism. I don't think that's, between the organizations that are doing events, between the marketing, between the hoteliers, I mean, you know, that's kind of where all this started, is, is where do we need, and you have to put both of them together, because where, you know, at what point is the right amount to reinvest back in? And so that's where I think you got to count that, those incentives in. And then, you know, when you think of it that way, then the remaining money goes to fund other city services, so, you know, that the taxpayers don't have to pay. So, you know, in that regard, that's a, a good deal, but I don't know. That, that was one of the things that stuck out to me, is I was trying to figure out how to calculate this, and, and kind of looking at different scenarios, and, and trying to be fair, you know, what, what might be fair, what looked equitable. It was always, you know, which, which number do you take?
Well, I think it's worth saying, even though it's been said before, I think, you know, if, if we didn't have the CBV, Discover Bristol, if we had our own marketing department, you know, it would probably cost us a good amount more than what we're currently giving the CBV. So it is important to fund them, I think, you know, and then, does the city really need a marketing department? If we have the CBV, they're doing it. But if we didn't have the CBV, and we decided not to do it anyway, you know, who is marketing Bristol? I do think when we have those big events, the race, Rhythm and Roots, other concerts, that's when you hear business owners in downtown say, it was a great weekend, I've had to hire more employees, and, and we can, you know, see the return with lodging taxes, so, but we don't, I do think we are having some savings currently, where we don't have it as an actual department, actual city employees here under this roof.
I need clarity. On the $200,000 that's incentive that's out there right now with this lodging taxes, is that $200,000 annual?
Well, it's based on the incentive agreements as to, I think what we've projected, they're...
It is annual right now.
That, that's, that's what I thought, and I wanted, I wanted everybody else to know that.
Right now, ladies and gentlemen, and city council, right now, before we give one more percent, or allocate one more percent to these outside agencies, right now, as we sit here tonight, 17% of our lodging taxes is already in play with incentives. 17%. So if we do 10% with these outside agencies, it jumps to 27% of our lodging taxes are now allocated. If we go 12%, 14%, before you know it, we've done give it away. We've done give it away. Right now, we're sitting at 17% that we're incentivizing these motels with, giving it right back to them. $200,000. So if we vote after this discussion, and we finally bring this subject to a vote, if we go with 10%, then the overall of our lodging taxes, 27% is allocated. We got to be careful. Am I right or wrong?
That's correct, as far as, go ahead, Ms. Bradlin.
That, that is our estimate when we prepared this, yes. But it's annual. That number's annual.
I know you all have sent out a chart, and I don't have it right here handy. When, when do those incentives end?
I want to say it's eight or 10 years before they conclude.
I think it's, I think it's 10 years expire. One, one is just beginning.
That, I mean, unless I'm doing the formula wrong, I mean, there is a percentage, but I come up with 13 rather than 17.
It's $1.2 million in play, and there's 200,000 outstanding. That's 17%.
No, the 200,000, you'd take off the total amount. It's 13% of the total amount collected.
That, to be clear, that $200,000 was based on the, the higher collection at 1.4 million. 1.494 is what that 200,000 was based on. Obviously, as our lodging taxes go down, that incentive will go down as well.
Okay. You're both right. I mean, 200,000 on the 1.4 is 13, 200,000 on the 1.29 is
seven, roughly 17. So I mean, you're both right, it's just a matter of...
Well, that's why, which number are we using?
Well, I think Mr. Wingard's using what's left over after the 200,000, and...
Yes. I'm not double counting.
But as the lodging tax goes down, it's 10% or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradlin, what's the, in this current year that we're in, I know it's the most different year we've had with COVID, what's the projected lodging tax for this budget year?
It's 1.27.
About 1.2?
It's still a lot.
Okay.
I think, did you, I know we've been talking, I think there was a point, I'll let Ms. Reinhardt, I think she had something to clarify, I believe, at one point. I know you were impatient, so...
Well, thank you. And, look, we're grateful for the conversation. Admittedly, it's very frustrating on some levels, because I think there's a, a big misunderstanding about lodging taxes. And I, when we say things in this room, I mean, you all get it, but when we say certain things in this room, our taxpayers don't understand that those lodging taxes should go back into tourism marketing. We're not giving Discover Bristol money to prop up the organization. That's not what this is about. It's about helping Karen Hester's business grow, because we can't do it. We're saturated here as a community. Those lodging taxes come from people who come here to visit. They're supposed to go back into tourism marketing. So, you know, when folks think that we're just here with a handout, trying to prop up our organization, that's not what this is about. This is about promoting all of our tourism businesses who are struggling right now. And I'm afraid we're going down a road of doing more harm in this conversation right now, and that's where I got very antsy, trying to sit there and, and wanted to participate a little bit, just so that we're clear. The tax, lodging taxes that are raised here come from visitors. To take out incentives that are being given out is, is a, just a disaster. Then you're looking at, once again, lowering that, in reinvestment back into tourism. It's not about propping us up. We are working on bare bones, more than probably any other organization in this entire community. And we have to reinvest this money. I think as a taxpayer, I think it's reckless that we build it and think people are going to come. We incentivize businesses, but we're not going to put the money that's brought in by visitors back into bringing people to support those businesses. That's reckless. And I'm speaking as a taxpayer, not as the chamber. The other piece of it is, you know, to, to say that we're going to take this money and give them what they need, it's what do we prioritize as a community? It's not, again, what we need. Do we prioritize tourism? If we don't, we need to stop doing what we're doing. So to lower the amount of money that's being reinvested back into this, yet again, is a disaster. Again, we incentivize hotels, we incentivize businesses to start, but we don't want to put the money behind promoting people to come here and spend money to support the businesses to stay alive. That's the bottom line. It's a very simple cycle, if you look at it. We can't go backwards on this, and that's where we're going. We have been advocating for two years, for 20 years, actually, but for the last two years in particular, for Discover Bristol to have their funding linked to lodging taxes. That's all we've been asking for. We fully support Believe in Bristol, and BCM, and all of the Paramount, all the other organizations here. We're not here speaking for them, because we can't speak for them. What we do is the DMO, the Destination Marketing Organization for Bristol, is bring people in here to support BCM, to support the Speedway, to support the Paramount, to support Outdoor Rec, to put money in cash registers. So we, we can't go back to then, now we're going to take this, and we're going to skim off incentives, because we're being penalized for something that we didn't have any decision-making process in. And the, the tourism, I, I know one comment was made about taking taxpayer money to support tourism. Tourism is supporting all, supporting fire and police in schools right now. We're supporting the trash pickup at, at the end of our driveway right now. We've got to get the thought process right, and we've got to quit misleading our community members and our taxpayers that this is some handout to Discover Bristol, because it is not. We are doing the work that really is required to be done by the legislation. I know there's no percentage set, but that legislation says, when you impose an ordinance at the local level where you charge people a lodging tax, you're supposed to reinvest it back into tourism marketing. And sorry, I, it's just, it's very frustrating, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that we're having this, but we got to get it right. I don't want us to do more harm in this conversation.
I have a couple of questions. One, what do you think the right number for this city is for your organization? What dollar amount?
That's a dangerous question, but I'll be real honest, because I want to reframe that, and if it's all right, what do we want to invest back into tourism? I don't think it should be, what does our organization need? What do we think is sufficient to reinvest back into tourism? And I hope we can all agree that that is the right question that we should be thinking about tonight. What do we think is the right amount? I will tell you that even at 10%, that's really too low, but I think that's a bare minimum for Discover Bristol, because we're, we're advocating for everybody. We're advocating for Exit 7, for Exit 5, for the Bristol Mall, for all, it's not just downtown. We're the entire community. That's our job, and it's to support all these places. So I think, I mean, at a bare minimum, 10%, and that's not net, that's gross. I think it needs to be, bare minimum, for Discover Bristol, 10% of the gross. And I'm sorry, that's, it should be 100%, because we should be investing it back in.
Well, in a, in a perfect world, it probably would be a whole lot higher here, but unfortunately, our prior councils before us has throwed this city under a bus, a train, and sunk us on the Titanic.
I understand, we have been very sensitive.
Very, very careful, because those lodging taxes are critical to paying the bills in this city.
It is, and I get that.
We need a compromise that is fair to everybody, the taxpayers included. Because all these bad mistakes that the prior councils have made, all that burden has fallen on the taxpayers in this city. And they need all the assistance that they can get. And that outside money coming into these lodging taxes is that assistance that helps carry the burden of all of our financial debts and mistakes that this city has made.
That's why it's so important.
In a perfect world, you would be getting your 10, 15, 20%. And we need to get this city's financials in order to where that can truly be, one day. But right now, unfortunately, we cannot get there. Oh, well, I guess we can. I mean, this council's not exempt from making a, a royal flush down the toilet?
10% is not ideal. I mean, I think, you know, I loved your comment about it. I wish we had the problem that we were investing a million dollars back into tourism. That is spot on, and that is exact, that would be the best problem we could ever wish for. But saying that 10% to Discover Bristol is not some pie in the sky dream, it's a bare minimum. I mean, we get ridiculed for that across the Commonwealth and across the state of Tennessee. And I know, and I, we're very sensitive. We've tried to be so understanding and work with you all on the funding, but this money is supposed to be reinvested, because it generate, the more you reinvest, the more we draw in. And the more we have to pay fire and police and schools and all the things, I mean, we've got to get that mindset, that the more you invest, the more you reap.
I'm going to interject just one thing. I misspoke earlier, the incentives are five to six years. I apologize.
I mean, I did, I think I sent you all today in an email. I took Bristol, Virginia's funding over the last 20 years, that, the actual lodging tax collections, and then the allocation to Discover Bristol, what that percentage is right now, but then looked at that historical data of if we did 10, 12, 14, all the way up to 20%. And if we did it based on the 2019, 2020 tax collections, that would be $137,851. So that's just for one, one point in time, at 10%. And I, the, the thing I worry about lumping us all together, we're all partners in this, that you all have noted, but the last thing we want to see happen, and we've seen it happen across the street, it happened, and it's created a lot of angst to overcome, is we're partners, trying to work together, so we don't want to be competitors for funding when we're trying to work together. I think to set exact amounts, if you put it in one pot and say, "You get this, you get," then next year, they'll be coming back and say, "Well, we think this organization should have this much more, and reduce this one, and reduce that one." I think it needs to be, I mean, we're here advocating, we're just asking for the Discover Bristol piece to be considered, and would never intend to think we could speak for the other organizations.
Well, council, it appears there probably needs to be some more discussion in regards to this matter. I, I think we've had some good discussions in the past, but I don't know, unfortunately, how much more fruitful this will be to continue to hash this out tonight. I would like to say that we do have bond counsel and our financial advisors ready to go for the next item, whenever, whenever we choose to do that. If you all want to continue to discuss, we can do that as well, but just wanted to, it seemed that this might be a good time to wrap it up.
Well, I think one thing that would help expedite this is if council actually talked to each other outside of chambers.
I mean, I guess to me, in some of this, we, we've talked about, but I don't know that we came to a consensus. But I would probably think about where we are, and, and I think Councilman Wingard's right, reach out. Once you kind of, I spent most of the day building a spreadsheet, looking, so I could look at different scenarios, what things look like, and that's where I started realizing, which number am I using? So, you know, are we going to use a gross or a net? Are we going to take a percentage and lump things together, or just look at each individual? And just, like I say, in terms of simplicity, setting up the formulas in the spreadsheet, because I had to take a percentage of a percentage, made it, it's not simple to do that, I can tell you that. And then, I guess, come up with a number or a range that everybody feels comfortable with, because that, that's what we kind of, I mean, I think the first two, are we going to, are we talking about all the agencies? I mean, and, and if we are, they need to be a part of this conversation. As I say, Ms. Reinhardt and Mr. Perrin have provided us information. We've started talking about the CVB, but to bring the other organizations, and I, I haven't had any conversations with them or heard from them, so I think it would, you know, at, at some point, we need to bring them in, but, you know, and then which number are we looking at, in terms of a percentage, kind of figure that out, and, and come to agreement, and then just, what, what is a good number, and that we can, everybody can feel comfortable with, and be willing, you know, I got a feeling that, that we're all, don't know that we're going to come up with a number that all of us would agree on, but something that we can move forward with as, as kind of a, as we talked about, a floor, because what we're, what my hope in, in having this discussion, it's good we're having it, because it's been good discussions, but every, I think this is our fourth time, every time it's probably been close to an hour, that would have been a half a day workshop at a budget session. So if we can do this now, we can streamline things in the future, but also, we, we're not trying to figure this out, looking at, at a specific budget, but just kind of in general, where we need to stand, and, you know, what, what is that number? And, and I think, you know, we've made some progress, as I said at the beginning, that there is a consensus that, that money does need to be reinvested, and, and so what is that amount that needs to be reinvested to help grow tourism? I mean, that, that's really what we're trying to do, is try to figure out how to not just necessarily give money away, but reinvest it in a way that it would generate even more revenues, and, and that'll help offset things. So I would say, unless anybody has anything, we'll bring this back up probably in two more weeks, and, and, but in the meantime, really sit down and, you know, try to figure this out.
I've got, I've got bond, I've got bond counsel on the phone.
We, we need to move on, because we, we have to get to the...
Now, you've done this to me twice, I hope you remember this.
I, I do.
Because I could have wrapped this up for you two weeks ago, and instead, I threw it in the trash. I could have settled this whole thing for this council two weeks ago. And now you're pulling the same immaterial trick tonight, AKA.
All right. All right. So let's move to the next item, item number five, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020, of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and providing for the form and details and payment thereof.
Counsel, tonight, is a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, or sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020. This would be the Series 2014 bonds that are eligible for refinancing. The potential debt savings are approximately $150,000 per year. And I do have Davenport, Roland Couch with Davenport on the phone, and Megan Gillian, our bond counsel with Kaufman and Canals on the phone as well, if you all have any questions in regards to this refunding of previous debt. I think it totals about 16.4 million.
Does it change the timeline of the bonds paying off?
It does not. It does not extend.
I mean, it only makes sense to me to refinance. The interest rates are at an all-time low. If we don't, if we're not changing the maturity dates, then the city wins.
It's exciting. No questions, but it's exciting that we're able to do this. I think, am I reading this right, that with refinancing these bonds, the city will save approximately $3 million in interest over the life of the bonds?
That, that's correct. And now, just so everybody knows, these bonds have not been put on the open market yet, so the interest rate may change from what you've seen in the summary that has been presented to you. We anticipate going to market October 7th or 8th, I believe, and that's when we'll lock those rates into place.
I see no reason to move fo, not to move forward myself.
Yeah, anytime that you can save that much money for people in the city, it's a no-brainer, so I, I have no problems whatsoever.
Yeah, I, I'll just add, I appreciate Davenport looking at these opportunities. As, as has been mentioned, I think you're not going to find, you'd be pretty hard-pressed to find lower interest rates right now. So I think anytime one of these comes up, we should take advantage of it, especially as, as has been pointed out, as long as it doesn't change the term, it just, take advantage of, of a good, a better interest rate, helps save money, gives us a little more to add to our, through the savings, to add to our debt repayment plan, which, you know, as we look out in the future, this is savings we can use to pay off additional debt, so...
But here's another thing, too. We need to be thinking forward. On, on this savings right here, I mean, this is 100, a potential $150,000 a year, okay? And the city has made great strides with our finances. But we need to think forward and start allocating money in savings like this. I mean, finally, we've got money in the bank. Things are good right now. But when this city does something like this and saves money, we need to get caught up on our closure and post-closure on that landfill, because every bit of that falls on the taxpayers' back. So we need to be smart with what we do with this money and allocate it, and not just put it back in the general fund and start giving it away again, and, and just squandering it. We need to start looking. How can we position this city to be stronger next year? And take the burden off of the taxpayer... the burden off of the taxpayers every opportunity we get? Now, this is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can use and not ask these taxpayers to do the closure and post-closure on that landfill. We need to be smart.
Well, I think traditionally, though, the funds in the other refinances has went towards, as our debt, you know, it's going to escalate, so this is being said, the savings from this debt will help pay the future. Is that correct, Ms. Bradlin?
We've got the debt covered. We've got the debt covered. We can pay the debt. Now, we've got to figure out every avenue we can. I mean, we're already paying thirty-three dollars a month for garbage pickup. That's absurd. So every opportunity we get to help the citizens out, we need to take that advantage. And this is an opportunity to save one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, allocate it to the landfill, even if we done it to the liner. We cut the liner expenditures this year, the capital on the liner that we had been setting aside to make the budget work. And the taxpayers are paying for the liner, because it's coming out of the general fund, on top of the thirty-three dollars a month they're paying. So let's start getting a game plan on how we're going to head this off.
Any more questions?
I would just ask that the resolution be read by caption only.
Okay. Was there, let's see, any public comment? No one signed up on this item before we vote. All right. Can we... Do we have a reading of the resolution by caption only?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading. We have to have... Do we have a motion for the reading and then the motion to approve, or...
Actually, what it should have been, I should have just read the resolution and then make a motion, but we'll... If you all want to withdraw the motion to read the resolution, then...
Withdraw.
All right. So I will read the resolution by caption only, and I may have messed that up when I said that.
That's all right.
But resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020, of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and providing for the form, details, and payment thereof. Just to clarify, it is sixteen point eight two million dollars of taxable general obligation bonds.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution by caption only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Wingard, a second by Councilman Osborne. Any additional discussion? All right. Clerk, please call roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number six, approval of amended minutes.
Counsel, you have some amended minutes before you today, if I can find my notes here. I believe these amended minutes were for the July first meeting, if I'm not mistaken, where we left a council member off the list who was actually present, and I think at the time, that was you, Councilman Park...
No.
I'm sorry.
It was actually, it was just a vote that wasn't recorded...
I'm sorry.
Correctly in the minutes, and per Robert's rules, amended minutes need to be considered by themselves. Mr. Mumpower was not present at that meeting.
That's right.
So he should not be voting on him, but that's not a...
All right. Any... No one signed up for any comments? So do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, call roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda, item number seven.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Osborne, second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, call roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll take about a five-minute recess. We have a call meeting to deal with CARES Act funding, so I'll go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting, and then we'll come back in about five minutes.